Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to get started. The first thing on our agenda is a special session and obviously I would entertain a motion to go into special session at this time.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Munson. A second by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All in favor of going into special session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The first item is an approval of an ordinance authorizing legal counsel and staff to commence with eminent domain proceedings at the Old City Light Plant, otherwise known as the Melp property.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance to authorize legal counsel and staff to commence with eminent domain proceedings against property legally described as Lot 2, 2.9, 633 acres on the east side of Eastern Boulevard, known as the Old City Light Melp, further identified in SDAT as located in District 17, account number 025759. Public purposely eminent domain proceedings are related to the protection and continued operation of public utilities contained within and adjacent to the property and public safety concerns related to the condition of the property.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is approved. The ordinance is approved. Next on the agenda is the introduction of an ordinance authorizing a three-month extension to the cable television franchise agreement with Antietam Cable Television, Inc.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the attached ordinance be introduced to authorize a three month extension of the cable television franchise agreement with Antietam Cable Television, Inc. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the ordinance is introduced. That is the close of our special session, so at this point we'll go into work session. The first item on our work session agenda is a proclamation. And at this point, I would like to bring up Sila Bartel and Diana Reyes. Have a proclamation here for each of you. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind standing here and facing our audience here, for the television viewers at home, this is or will be Hispanic Heritage Month, starting this Sunday, the 15th of September, and going through October 15th, 2013. And this is a proclamation declaring it such. Whereas Hispanic Americans are the youngest and fastest growing minority in our nation, and whereas the vibrant Hispanic influence can be seen in all aspects of American life and culture, and its contributions help illustrate all that is best about our great nation, and whereas in order to pay tribute to and recognize the important achievements of Hispanic Americans, Hispanic Heritage Week began in 1968, and the observance was expanded in 1988 to Hispanic Heritage Month by the passage of Public Law 100-402 as a 31-day commemoration beginning on September 15 and ending on October 15. And whereas, September 15 is significant as the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16 and September 18 respectively. Also Columbus Day, or Dia de la Raza, sorry about that, I'm not very good at Spanish, which is October 12, falls within this 31-day period. Now therefore, with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize September 15 through October 15, 2013, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hagerstown, Maryland, and encourage our citizens to join in activities designed to facilitate recognition, understanding, and appreciation of the significant contributions made by Hispanic Americans. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have one for each of you.
Thank you very much.
And I know that on this Sunday, the 15th, there will be a festival. And would you like to tell the folks more about that and how they can learn more about it?
This is our 7th annual Hagerstown Hispanic Festival. The purpose of the festival is to raise funds for, oh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
To raise funds for Hispanic students attending ATC. Since we started, we've given over 28 scholarships. Another purpose also is to just promote our diversity here in town, have everybody come out, no matter what race, color, shape, size, or form you are, and just celebrate good Hispanic food, Hispanic dancing, Hispanics traditions, and it also gives the community, the Hispanic community mainly, a base for vendors and exhibitors that want to promote their businesses and target the Hispanic community that day.
And where and when?
Hagerstown Fairgrounds Park, Sunday, September 15. The time is from 12 to 6:00. And we invite all of you to come out there and shake your salsa hips with us.
Right. And while we're here, I know there's Zumba happening on Friday in the central lot here. Do you want to say a little more about that?
Yeah. I will be there from 6 o'clock till 6:10. So there's about eight instructors and we're getting together to promote Zumba and mainly to collect funds for the Walnut Free Clinic. So Anita Binder has been organizing that and the cities behind us, they picked the best Zumba instructors. I don't know how I got picked, no, just kidding.
And so the event starts at 5:30, I think it goes through 7:30 at the central lot. It's what, $10 if you sign up in advance?
Mm-hmm.
And I think 13?
$10 for adults, $5 for kids.
$5 for kids.
Because kids are welcome too.
Right. And the whole idea is to get people aware of getting active and staying healthy, and also goes to a good cause for the community free clinic too, so.
Correct.
Thank you for all you're doing in the community.
Do you want to add anything?
And yeah, Sila, would you like to say a few words?
Certainly. The, as Diana mentioned, the festival is a celebration of the Hispanic culture here in Hagerstown. As you all know, the Hispanic population continues to grow, and this is a celebration not just for Hispanic, but also for the community at large. And like Diana said, we invite you all and hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks. Oh, sure.
Do you want to grab another pad?
Yes.
Okay, on three. One, two, three. Great.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again for being here. We'll see you on Sunday. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the recycling program participation update. And here's our city engineer, and I think we have some representatives from waste management here today.
Yes, with me today is Pat Harity, the district manager of waste management. Pat's an elected official up in Pennsylvania, so he feels your pain.
There's no pain. It's all pleasure.
Antrim Township.
Oh, okay. Well Rodney, do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, I'd just like to go through the memo and highlight a few things. I think Pat has a couple of things to add, so stop me if you have any questions. But as we all know, the program was drastically changed at the beginning of 2012. We basically implemented the task force that was put together back in 2011. We implemented their recommendations. Mayor, you were involved in that task force. Last April, the totes were distributed, recycling totes around the community, and the program has been running since then. Residents pay $156 per unit, and that was a decrease from what was being paid before by about $7 annually. As far as trash collection goes, the results of the program, the amount of trash that is collected and disposed in a landfill has gone down about 1,000 tons per year. Put that in human terms, I like to use the City Park Lake as an example. If you looked at the lake, if it was a foot deep, that's how much, 1,000 tons of trash. So that much trash is not going into the landfill, just to give you some perspective on that. So we are throwing away less, and also every ton that we dispose is being done at a much cheaper rate. We were paying almost $60 a ton, and now we're paying $42 a ton. So that's good news. And again, everything I come, everything I say here is going to be because the citizens of Hagerstown have really stepped up and I think have really tried to embrace recycling and disposing less. Recycling, there's a graph in your packet that shows how the recycling tonnages have changed over the course of the last, say, three years, and I think it pretty much speaks for itself. You can see when we started the single stream recycling program in January, there was a start, start of an uptick, but when the totes were issued, it seems like that's when the recycling tonnage has just really moved in a positive direction. And right now, since the program has been started, we are averaging 212 tons of recyclables collected every month. That's about 130% increase since the program, before, in the old program when we had the old two bin system. So we continue to want to push to see that improve, but it's definitely heading in the right direction. The totes, there was, there was a lot of discussion about when we purchased the totes, and it was a, about 12,000 of those was purchased in the city. The debt service on those is about $73,000 a year for about 10 years, and the good news is that the savings on the landfill disposal costs is about $140,000 a year or so, almost double the revenue needed to cover the debt services is saved by not throwing so much trash into the landfill, even at the reduced rates, the landfill rates. So we have issues with some of the totes being stored in the public right-of-way. That's something we continue to deal with, where people put the totes in the right-of-way and they're not using them properly. We can tell that because the equipment that's on the waste management truck will tell us if they're not being serviced or not being used. So if they're not being used and they're sitting in the right-of-way, we take them away. We have waste management taking them away. If they are using them, we've sent them nice letters asking them to please continue to recycle, but please store it somewhere else. That's had minimal impact. So we still have some people that are recycling but storing them out in the right-of-way, and at this point, we haven't had them removed. But that continues to be an issue, especially in the downtown area.
How many totes would you say you've actually had to take off because they weren't being used?
You may know better than I do. Three or 400 maybe?
Yeah. Three or 400.
I know some people, you know, if they, "I didn't want this, this is, the city's littering by putting this tote in my yard," or, you know, "on my property," you know, I guess they're just the people who will never adopt recycling.
And we've taken those away. But on the flip side, when a new house is built or a new unit goes online, we take them a tote.
Right.
Or usually we'll have people requesting totes. We have some people requesting more than one tote.
Bigger totes.
And we'll service that too.
And just so people know, if they find that they do need a bigger tote, I think there's a way for them to swap out.
Yes.
Their tote for a larger tote.
Absolutely.
Upsize or downsize.
Right. We want it to fit their lifestyle. The Recycle Bank program is the incentive program that is geared to try to encourage people to recycle. There's a sheet in the packet on how that program works. It's a little bit confusing, but basically the gist of it is that if you participate in the recycling program, you sit your tote at curbside, you will receive points of which you can redeem and receive coupons for. So just some of the facts and figures of that program, about 28%, 28.6% of the residents have become members of the Recycle Bank program, and the Recycle Bank folks tell me that's a strong percentage for our community. They, they look at Hagerstown as being one of their poster childs. They, they really feel like the program here has been accepted well by the community. The citizens have earned over 977,000 reward points, and that has resulted in a total number of 4,246 unique rewards being issued by Recycle Bank to the residents. So in dollar terms, over the last 12 months, that means that about $39,866, almost $40,000 in discounts and coupons have been redeemed by the residents of Hagerstown because they simply put their recycling tote at the end of the curb. In addition to that, there's this thing called the co-spend. If you have a program where you say you have $5 off a $20 purchase, that $15 is considered the co-spend, and over the last 12 months, Recycle Bank reports that that's about $42,900. And the good news is there that those are mostly spent in local businesses, and so we have the savings, but we also have the co-spending.
Other dollars circulating in the economy.
Other dollars that are going into the local economy. We try to continually monitor that program, make sure that it's meeting the needs of everyone. We have conference calls with Recycle Bank every other month to try to keep that program as vibrant as possible. And they, they've done a pretty good job of sending out flyers and keeping people aware of the program, and we do that as well.
And I think it's important to note, you know, where it says, "The city enjoys a financial rebate when the amount of recycling each month exceeds 105 tons, and due to the tremendous recycling efforts by the citizens, to date, the city has received $17,170 in cash payments from waste management." And that, that money was used to pay for the extension of the yard waste program, but that's cash that the city earned from the citizens exceeding the.
That's correct. That's a check cut directly to the city of Hagerstown based on exceeding the, if you're a glass half empty or glass half full, ceiling or floor.
Mm-hmm.
If you exceed the ceiling on the, on the tonnage, a rebate is, is offered to the city per the contract, and we're averaging anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 a month in rebates sent to the city.
So you would say it was exceeding the expectations and probably of?
I think we exceeded the expectations in the very first month. And we've been paying rebates since June of 2012.
That's what we like to hear.
And they've just continued to exceed, and we like to see that too, so.
So the more everybody recycles, the more the city can actually benefit from that.
Well, you receive cash payments from, from our company. Your land, your, your landfillable tonnage is down. Your recyclable tonnage is way up. And the offset is that you, you are, you're recognizing the value of promoting the recycling program by not placing those tons into a, into a landfill at a much higher rate, a much higher rate.
Rodney, are we ready for questions?
Sorry, I've just been interrupting. It's a free-flowing conversation. Mr. Brubaker, please ask your question.
Oh, I'm in polite mode today.
I know. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
The, reaching out to those that aren't recycling now, we're going to send letters. We can, we can tell because of those barcodes, right?
Correct.
And you know which barcodes went down a street or something?
Not only, well, not, not just the barcode, but the RFID chip that is embedded inside of the toter.
Right, right.
And the device that's.
You just know by the fact that it's not getting scanned, that it's not being used.
Correct. If that toter does not come within the rear of our vehicle, it's not going to be scanned.
Right.
So we know where all the totes are in the city, or at least initially where they were. We know they moved some. But if they're not being serviced, then we know that address, and we could send a letter to that address saying, very politely, "We see you're not recycling, or at least your tote's not being sent out. We'd like to invite you to recycle and, you know, call us if we can help you do that."
Yeah, and get reward points and all that.
List the benefits, yeah.
Correct. So that's, that's what we're going to try to do the next few months here.
Is there a particular neighbor area where, is it pretty much scattered through the city where we're not getting response?
I would say it's pretty scattered. Some areas are heavier than others. There's no doubt about that, but it varies throughout the city, but we'll probably target some of the residential areas, outlining the city first. I mean.
To tag on to that question, of the trash that's being thrown away, certainly a great deal of it could be recyclable, I suspect. Do you have any concept, any thoughts about how much of it could be recyclable if people actually worked a little harder maybe?
Usually when, when, when a recycling program is initiated, that is not mandatory, but, but a recycling program that is well advertised, much like the city did when we first started this, we saw recycling participation go from about 20% to upwards of 60%. And that was a combination of the Recycle Bank program, the totes, single stream, and the addition of the collection all in one day, so. But to answer your question, probably about 25% of what is being, from the residents that are not recycling currently, could probably be recycled if they, if they would use the toter that was provided for them.
Our diversion rate, which is the number that the industry likes to use on how much a material is not going into a landfill, how much is being diverted away. If you take the yard waste plus the recycling and divide it by the total yard waste recycling and garbage that's thrown away, our diversion rate was 18%, basically plus, you know, one out of every five pounds, we'll say that way, whatever unit you want to use, was recycled or diverted from the landfill before. Now it's almost 30. It's 28 and a half.
And the state has a goal of like 40 or 50 or something like that by?
Yeah, the national average is a third, 33%, so.
And what's ours again?
It's 28 and a half.
28 and a half, so we're approaching that.
Right, right.
Wow, we're not, we're doing well, but we're not even at the national average.
Exactly. We still have work to do. Right.
Rodney, there's a commercial side to this program too, where we enhance service for commercial customers.
Has that been a success, getting commercial customers?
I think for the people that can use it, it's a success. Here's what I mean by that, is we have limits on how much we can take. We basically give them 95 gallon totes. And we say, "If you can handle that much capacity for a week of recycling, 95 gallons of capacity for trash, then we're the program for you. It's very reasonably priced." And we've had a fair number of people take advantage of that, especially the recycling. We have 50 different businesses in the city that are, 49, that are just recycling with our program. But if you have more trash than that, if you have more recycling in that, mostly if you have more trash than that, then we tell them to hook up with a private hauler, get a dumpster or something like that, because it's probably beyond what we can just sit out on the side.
Right.
So, so I think it's a good start.
I know one of the issues, I sat not only on the task force back in 2011, I guess it was, but also the, the county solid waste advisory commission, which apparently is no longer in operation. I don't think they ever notified us, but apparently they've done away with that organization. They're looking to retool it as something like environmental matters or something, but it really did create a hit on the county landfill when the city stopped sending their trash, because waste management has their own landfill across the border. Also, and I know this is a bunch of trash talk, but what other ways would there be to divert trash other than recycling a yard waste? I mean, that's pretty much it.
Well, composting.
Okay.
Which I don't know if any communities.
Composting or waste energy.
Waste energy.
And unfortunately, in this area currently, there is no waste energy facility that is, you know, economically feasible to transport that waste to. Now, that may change in the next two, three years with a proposed site in Frederick, Maryland. But industry speculation is the, you know, the chance of that happening is slim to none, just because they're, 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 they have a difficult issue with getting volume enough to make that kind of a facility feasible.
So really, the only way to increase the amount of diversion is to increase participation in the existing programs?
In my 25 years of experience, the best way to do it is kind of the way that Rodney has, has taken to approach it. Reach out to the citizens, get a task force together, get the best ideas together in the same room, educate the public, make it economically feasible for them to do it, give them an incentive to do it, show that it saves money for the community, and try to give some of that money back to them in some way, and that works.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment to follow up on you. Unfortunately, some of our citizens think there's another way. Perhaps they think it's a better way to get rid of their trash. They throw it on the ground, in the gutter. And there are a lot of people in this community who complain about the amount of trash, and I know that our staff works very hard to clean the trash up, but unfortunately, we do have a lot of people who throw stuff right in the gutter.
I'm assuming littering is illegal in the city of Hagerstown. Do we know how much of a fine there is attached to that? Does anyone know? Is there a fine? I'm just curious, because I agree with Councilmember Munson.
It's illegal in the state.
Right.
It's a crime in the state.
Right. In addition to just being repugnant and morally wrong, but I do, I notice the amount of trash too, and I wonder if we need to put in strategic locations throughout the city little signs that say, you know, littering is a, you know, can get you this much of a fine or something like that as a term. But anyway, that's kind of an aside. Another issue related to this, and I think I'd let Rodney know I would bring this up, but I know, and this actually came from a resident in Penny's neighborhood, who is still hoping that there will be twice a week trash pickup in the more densely populated areas of the city. Can you tell us where the boundary? I know there is twice a week pickup in the core of downtown, but what is, like, what are the boundaries of that area?
It's in the downtown, it's about Baltimore Street to the south, like Walnut to the west, parts of Mulberry, but not all of Mulberry to the east, and Church, just north of Church.
Yeah.
And what we tried to do when we laid the program out was look at the multi-unit buildings.
Right.
If a building had five, six, eight, 10 units in it, imagine once a week, that would be a mountain of trash. So it was decided that we would provide twice a week service for them, so we'd have too many piles of trash, so to speak. And that was the idea there. I don't know. Can you speak to what you've seen in other communities as far as twice a week?
I mean, my local district has dozens of municipal contracts, and there, we do not have any that have twice a week service. In fact, I did a little investigating before I came here. In our market area, which is most of Pennsylvania, all of West Virginia, all of Maryland, all of Virginia, there's two municipal contracts that actually require twice a week service. That's an ordinance that was passed, and the one actually has changed their ordinance, and their most recent bid specs, I guess, do not, will, will reflect a, a bid requirement of one-time-a-week service for all of, all of those things. And I think most of the time, when municipalities are looking at that as the additional wear and tear on their streets, which is a huge percentage of their, of their annual budget, is roads and road maintenance, so.
I think for at least this particular resident, full disclosure, it's my cousin Kim, who lives right down the street.
I knew that.
But even in the non-apartment building types of communities, you have very close quarters or maybe even no yard in between, maybe you have a little walk-through, and people put their trash right off the back porch, and maybe they have four babies and they're changing four kids' diapers every day, and it starts in the summer. Some, I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe we take a look at, you know, really pinpoint some of these other neighborhoods, maybe outside of the current area that, and really, I'm looking at only in the summertime, perhaps, in the warmer months when trash starts to cook, that maybe we could, maybe with some of the rebate money that we get, we might be able to do twice a week trash pickup in some of those more densely populated.
And we're open to any suggestions that you, that you as a body may have to, to expand that, even if it's in zone half in the downtown area.
It just would be good to try to monitor what we actually do have on the streets. You know, I mean, there's, there's a double up the street, and your trash people actually thought that it was a set-out, and they have six children on each side.
Sure.
Okay? It wasn't a set-out, but this is what we get to look at, and I want to tell you something. The guys that you have, honestly, I don't know how they handle it in the summer. That's my concern.
Sure.
Because, I mean, when they're dumping, you might as well have a safety suit on and everything else, because it is horrendous in the summertime.
It's a tough job.
In the summertime, I mean, you know, there's no way, there's no way that you can stop flies which continue to, and this is my problem with, with only once a week in the summertime.
Understood.
It's a major problem, yeah.
And what about, because I know, I want to try to keep to the agenda and honor the time, because I know we're on a time crunch tonight to end on time, but about pickup in alleys, this has been another concern that I hear of from a lot, so that instead of trash being put out on the front sidewalk in front of houses, is it possible to use the alleys for what they were intended, which was for those kinds of services?
Yeah, we've actually done a lot of research on that, and I think I've made a couple presentations in my career here to the city council about that. A couple of. The couple of issues that we found in the past.
Turning radii and things like that.
One, it was tough for the larger trucks to get in the alleys. But more importantly, there's plenty of residential properties, especially in the downtown, that don't actually go the whole way to the alley. There's other properties that run in behind them, like some of these garages and things are actually owned by other people. So those people would have to take their garbage out around the whole block, basically, to bring in there. That was the second issue. The third issue was that we thought that the alleys then, would people take their garbage back and not necessarily put it right behind their property? Would, we'd need like centralized collection places. It seemed like there was going to be issues with the trash in the alleys and where it will be collected.
If you can imagine, I mean, us in the, in the transportation business, trying to fit a big truck down some of the narrow city streets.
Oh, sure.
It's difficult enough with cars parked on both sides. Trying to fit them through an alley now, if you're putting totes and other garbage cans and all those kinds of things in those alleys, makes it even harder. The other thing, kind of, that we've noticed recently, and it's, and it's just, it's sporadic, but low-hanging wires in the alleys when you're trying to bring larger vehicles through, through the alleys is also, presents a challenge, and we certainly don't want to tear somebody's phone wire, cable wire down as we're trying to, trying to do our job. So, in cases where we actually have to enter an alley, because that's the only way that we can, we can safely service that, we have a smaller pickup truck.
I was just going to say, do you have smaller trucks, or?
We have a small pickup truck that goes through the alleys and some of these, some of these spots. And I'm not quite sure exactly how many there are, but maybe half a dozen or so.
That we do service.
That we send a small pickup through that services the trash first, and then goes back through for the recycle and back through for the yard waste on those service days.
Well, I appreciate you looking into the issue and researching it anyway. Mr. Alshar?
Just so I understand correctly, what you said is you, basically you doled out the bins, and a number of individuals have contacted the city and said, I, I don't want the bin, I don't want to use it.
Even though we sent the postcards out, if you remember, that said you don't want to opt out.
Right.
So we had a few do that, yeah.
So when you, the city, send me a bill with my quarterly water and sewer bill, what is the cost for trash service on that bill?
It'd be $30.
$7.50?
$38 a quarter.
So it's $38 a quarter, somewhere in that neighborhood. When you send a bill to a property owner that has opted out of using the recycling bin, what is the bill?
Same.
That, to me, when you talk about removing 1,000 tons of trash in a year from the landfill, not having that cost of tipping fees, and I work for a small municipality, and we have mandatory recycling, and it works wonderfully. And I was proponent of that, you know, eight years ago, I think, when we started down this road here in this city, and couldn't get the votes for it then. But I'm a firm believer in once a week. I think if there are, you know, 200 or 300 jurisdictions that do it now, with, with little issue, I think that there's no reason Hagerstown can't continue to do that. I think that if you are going to refuse to use a recycling tote that reduces the cost to the city for disposal of trash, then your trash bill should be more. And I think that we talk about incentivizing things, I think we need to talk about, you know, the reverse on that.
That's more of a nudge, I think they like to call that in the business.
Because if I'm going to participate in that and fill that bin up every week, and somebody's going to voluntarily decide simply not to, which increases the cost to the city for those tipping fees, and frankly, for the collection and weight, I think that there should be an additional cost.
Well, the mechanism is in place with, with the program that we're, that we're running right now, that you can identify those residents that are not using that program.
So maybe the first start is a little gentle persuasion, invite them.
Yeah.
But perhaps we get to a point where, in order to increase the rate of diversion, we have mandatory. I think it's a conversation worth having, because I do, I agree with Mr. Alshar. People will complain, well, I'm not using it, I shouldn't have to pay. Well, you're paying for the service, why don't you use it? Really, I mean, that's what it boils down to.
But how difficult is it going to be? Because you have a lot of people that don't use it, that for the most part are renters where I live. I mean, they'll fill it up with everything else but recycle, unfortunately.
And there's ways, I think, that the cities work with folks that do that.
Well, I mean, but it's going to be very difficult, because a lot of your renters continue to move around and around. So how are you going to do that when it comes to building? The whole billing mechanism then is going to, you know?
Well, and the tote stays with the property. I mean, it's, that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, but still, I mean, Kristen's saying, you know, they should be, but how do you, I mean, fix that problem?
Well, we talked about, you know, on the task force, we talked about low-hanging fruit, and I think we identified people who rent as maybe a target group.
If you've spent $600,000 purchasing these totes, and you've only increased, and I know it's a good number, but you've only increased your overall diversion rate by 12%, then, then I don't think you're getting your bang for your buck, so to speak, or your return on investment on a purchase of that volume of bins. And I think that, you know, and I look at the Frederick County model, I mean, that was clearly the goal in that model, was diversion. And I think that we need to take whatever steps are necessary to, to increase that diversion rate, because at the end of the day, I'd like to hear that we're, you know, diverting $300,000 worth of creditable tonnage, you know, not 176,000.
Right. Well, I think the next step for us will be sending these letters. That's something we can do, and we'll see, we'll measure that result, and then we can look into this.
We can have more trash talk to come on the agenda. Well, thank you very much for this update. It's very informative, and personally, I think it's exciting. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You and Lou.
Lou thinks it's exciting.
Lou likes junk, no, Lou likes junkyards.
Oh.
Don't you, Lou? Junkyards are beautiful.
Got it.
Next item on the agenda is transportation priorities.
I think probably all of you know that every year, the Maryland Department of Transportation Secretary, who is now James Smith, and the State Highway Administrator, right now is Melinda Peters, they tour the state, and they'd just like to hear from the local governments and local officials as to what our priorities are for transportation dollars and transportation spending. So, next week, I have a meeting with some of their staff. They won't be here, the, but the staff will be here, and we'd like to give them some feedback as to what we see as our priorities. So every year, I try to get the feedback from the Marion Council, I think the Board of County Commissioners does the same, and we collectively meet with them. So I just put a few suggested priorities on here. I'd like to hear your feedback as to how you'd like me to add to this, delete from this, prioritize this, and I'll just go through them quickly, and then you can give me your feedback. First and foremost was highway user revenue, although it's, it's bumped up a little bit in the last couple of years. Now we're over the $300,000 mark. It wasn't too long ago that we were getting well over $1 million in highway user revenue, and this was one of the major financial impacts that the city had to face here in the recent past. So be advocating for continued increases there.
Rodney, can we just disturb him?
Sure.
I think this needs, you have it number one here, I think this one needs to remain number one. And obviously, the administration is sympathetic to this particular issue. I mean, they increased it, I guess, last session, right?
Right.
And it needs to be, continue to be increased. This particular one, I think, is really very important.
And Don, I'd like to eliminate on that, since we started on this. And these numbers may not be quite right, but order of magnitude, they're, they're close. We, the municipality statewide got in the mid-40s back in 2008 or 2009, last year, full funding, $45 million to, to spread out. Make, MCO, the county organization, was asked which of their, when the, when the 2008 financial crisis hit, was asked which of their funding sources would they like, I mean, this was all informal, behind the back, would, would they like to see cut? And, and the least damage to them was highway user revenues, which impact every single municipality in the state. Municipalities were not consulted. We were cut back to somewhere between 7 and 9 million from 45, just a huge, almost wiped it out. And that was where we were for a few years. Last year, again, these numbers are approximate, the governor added for municipalities another 16 million, bringing the total funding up to the neighborhood in the mid-20s, where it used to be in the mid-40s, for municipalities only, not for the, the counties, to not get any of theirs back. But that was not a permanent increase. That was a one and/or two-time, probably two-time increase for this last year of this administration. But it's not incorporated in the formula, nor was the municipal revenue guaranteed when they redid the formula for the gas taxes this past time. This has once again been the, this once again will be the MML highest priority issue, but we fought it every year. And we talked to both the lieutenant governor and the governor about it personally, but we don't have assurances, so it's going to, you know, require a lot. And the success of that depends, will result in how much we get. But most likely, there will once again be a one-time stipend, but we can't write it into those five-year forecasts, because it's not in the formula. So that's the tricky situation there. And since I started on MML, I think I will mention one more thing. Although the committee voted by far to make double taxation the second highest priority after highway user revenues, after much debate and discussion, several hours of it, it was decided to make it not an initiative, a legislative initiative this year, but to take it to MCO and the legislative leaders over the year, instead of just this fall, since the representation is, is it's not a popular legislative subject, and they'll send us to MCO. Anyhow, MCO will, it'll be a very difficult issue to deal with, with MCO. And so, for a lot of reasons, it was decided to stall it, but that it would be introduced the year after this. So to the extent that can be, MML can abide by that, that's where that issue is.
Thank you for the update.
Yep. So we won't, at any rate, we won't get action on it this year, it doesn't look like. It'll be more of a year of negotiating.
I have a couple of questions. The, I agree about number one, being highway user revenues. I know the Eastern Boulevard corridor improvements have been around for a while. Access management plan for 65, from Lyles Drive to Wilson Boulevard, what area is this?
Well, it would be, you know, past South High, going out to Interstate 70, and the game changer there is the major retailer that starts with a W, that's going to be out there very soon.
Right.
And when they show up, it just, the congestion levels just change significantly. They're going to be doing a lot of improvements as part of their approval through the county, but there's just going to be a lot more traffic in that corridor. So we just want to make sure we're prepared for that. The state is willing to do the study. We don't have to have any financial participation, but it would be good for them to complete that study and see what impacts, what the future holds for us in that corridor.
Is anyone starting to talk about, speaking of that neck of the woods, when the, what was going to happen when the outlets opened in Clarksburg? What's going to happen to the outlets here in Washington County? Because that might divert a lot of traffic from, from that area too. I mean, that's certainly a consideration. But anyway, the status of the I-70 and 81 planning studies, I would hope, and when the mayors of Washington County met with Congressman Delaney, we, we stressed that the expansion of Interstate 81 has to be a priority. And even though the city of Hagerstown really doesn't have a lot to do with Interstate 81, I know there's a coalition through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and I, Maryland is going to be on the losing end of this, because Pennsylvania is already widening their stretch to three lanes, West Virginia's well on their way of doing that. And I know the big barrier is the bridge, but I think that's going to really hamstring us if we don't really get that done.
Again, more detail on that one. Yes, I have talked informally to staff members for all elected officials, federal elected officials, and I'm talking to state people, saying that they ought to join in this, that the bridge is an interstate bridge.
Right.
And it's a huge part, and it's all in Maryland.
Right.
And it, but it's a huge part of the cost of doing I-81. And it's true, having I-81 modernized, I think, is crucial to our economic, the whole area's economic future. And to make that a, the word earmarks out of fashion, but there are other states and other places are managing to receive directed federal funds. And I, I encouraged them to think hard about how to get that interstate.
I have an idea.
Bridge, and also to get it to the attention of the people in Glen Burnie.
We can call it the McCulkey Bridge.
Well, well, what about the McCulkey slash Carden Bridge? I mean, you know, you gotta be careful with that.
Well, that would be good too. I'm okay. Well, it happens to be that Senator McCulkey is the chair of the Appropriations Committee. That's what I was thinking, but.
But at any rate, I floated it out there, and I floated it with state people, and I intend to float it when, informally, informally, at the meeting, I've gone to almost all, when I've been available, to almost all the.
But honestly, and I think the, you know.
Field trip, road trip meetings with the Transportation Secretary.
Well, you know, 70 and 81 are, are, those are our economic engines at this point, and I think that has to be a part. So I'm glad to see that it's on there. I don't, I don't know if the priority is the status, or just getting it done. I don't know what, you know?
Understood.
I understand there's a lot of things going on in terms of the regional planning and whatnot.
Well, and to me, there's real debates about what we should push for. For instance, I think that bridge needs to be in, at least an eight-lane bridge, not a six-lane bridge.
To plan for future growth.
Six-lane is, yeah. Six lanes is probably already getting obsolete, and things like that. And so we need, we need to think about what, what it is we really need in this area. We have one of the most intensely-used stretches of 81. It's one of the shortest, of course, but with, and the most intersections per mile and interchanges, so it is kind of critical that we, we get somewhere. But I think a big part of getting Maryland to move on it is finding a way to pay for that bridge, yeah.
Right. And then lastly, on the sidewalk, I noticed on the map, and I understand, I know what's going on with the Culver project, and I think that's great, and to connect Route 40 there with Funkstown and Hagerstown. Is that a sidewalk going into the wastewater treatment plant? Where does that sidewalk go?
Uh, no.
That blue line is not the sidewalk.
That blue line just represents water.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so the blue line is just that little part over the Culver. That's the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay. I was confused there, like, well, that, that's a really nice.
It's not very clear.
Way to connect different parts of the city, but I just don't know what you're really going to connect to that.
It's actually a tributary to the Antion Creek.
Does it have a name? Is it like a?
It does not have a name. So this project is in design on Frederick Street for the sidewalk. We just want to ensure that they fund that, because it'll be a nice link between where the sidewalk system ends, north of Hagerstown Bookbinding and Printing, and the county's Southern Boulevard project.
Right.
Rodney, I can't remember. Did we assume state funding when we approved that? I remember talking about it and approving it. I can't remember.
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to lobby for it now.
Exactly.
And that would be the same state funding that we've been using for the improvements sidewalks on Route 40 on the dual highway, correct?
That is correct. It's that program, what they call their neighborhood conservation, or it's got a fund number now. They have several programs. They have that, they have the Safe Routes to School program, I think there's another one that's slipping my mind, but that program's the same one we used in the West End to put that sidewalk on in, and also the ones on the dual highway, same program.
I really applaud the city for, for moving on sidewalk issues. I'm really keen on pedestrian safety, so I think the more we can do to improve the, and, and working with the county too, because I know they really don't have any urban growth standards, and so, you know, I always tell folks, you can tell where you are in the dual highway if you're in the city or the county, just look and see if there's a sidewalk. And if there's a sidewalk, you're in the city. If you're, if there's not, you're in the county. And that's pretty evident throughout the urban growth area.
I think that there are two items still in here, and before I ask the question, maybe you can ask them about the substandard patch in front of Bowman Avenue.
Yes, it's going to be fixed. That was.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
Yeah. Where the water line broke, that's going to be taken care of soon. Where the water line broke, that's gonna be taken care of soon.
The item number two, Eastern Boulevard corridor improvements, and the map that you've provided on Yale Drive Extended, it, while everyone, well, everybody, while there are folks that generally agree that this bridge across the Antietam into this Mount Etna Farms and other properties east is, is a priority, it seems that one question that we never get answered to is what is the state's role in that specific project? Because it's not a state road.
Right.
It's not diverting state route traffic from state routes.
I think Route forty would see a decrease in traffic if this was built, based on the traffic study that we did a few years ago. But you're absolutely right.
Not thirteen million dollars of a bridge worth of diversion.
It's like twenty thousand vehicles a year in twenty years.
But, but I think that that, we need to be able to put our finger on that at some point, because while I feel like we are pushing for expansion of Eastern Boulevard out toward the north, there is this leg to the right and this bridge across the Antietam and this property to the east that we're sort of tying to that project.
Right.
And I think it's important to understand what the state feels its role's going to be in those sort of two pieces, because by no means do I want one held up, you know what I mean, over the other. I don't think that's appropriate.
Yeah. Thank you, Kristen, because that's, that's a concern, a longstanding concern, is how to tie that in and how to justify it. And I would add the caveat that I add each time in which people will pretend they don't hear, but if the city is gonna participate financially in that bridge, we need to be sure that we are tied into revenue streams from the properties across the, across the high.
Mount Etna Farms needs annexed.
I understand that, but, but there's obstacles there to that annexation. We can't annex it. There's pieces in between our, our property and the Mount Etna site.
The schools.
The, no, the, the hospital owns this site, and private parties own the site adjacent to it.
At one time, wasn't it that they felt that the city were the ones that were supposed to do that bridge? This was back when I was in office before, so where does it stand now? I mean, is there actually?
I have always argued that we should, that we are not responsible for that.
Oh, I know, but that's what they tried to say. Initially, it was supposed to be the hospital, because of the hospital moving out. That was supposed to be the whole thing.
It should've been done.
It flew away, that flew away.
It should've been done when the hospital was built.
Correct.
I totally agree with you.
And I just don't know where it stands, because no, we should not have to pick that tab up.
At one time, we had it in our CIP, I think, but, but I don't think, you know, it's, it's not.
We as staff have been saying exactly what Councilman Brubaker was saying. The only way the city would even consider participating is if there is, you know, a private shooting.
Well, there has to be. I mean, that's, you know, that's always been my stance on it, but they, you know, they fought that, right.
As far as we know that it is, right.
Yeah.
Let me chip in on that, too. I think getting that bridge is a very high priority, and frankly, I think we need to get it any way we can, because that, at some point, does allow us to, to take that property across the bridge and put it in our tax base, which I think is very important to us in the future. However, and I do wanna say this. John Dunnehugh, and John Dunnehugh alone, among the delegation, has been talking with the governor about this bridge, paying for this bridge, and with the Secretary of Transportation about paying for this bridge. And I don't know that he's, he's had great success yet, but he's certainly started the conversation and made his, his views known. And I, I believe that the conversation can, needs to continue, and this needs to be a high priority in that regard. I think there were possibilities of getting this bridge in the past, but unfortunately, political, political things got in the way, and it just simply didn't happen back a few years ago when it should've happened. And I think it can happen now, though.
You are right about that.
So.
Rodney, I don't wanna.
Just keep whispering in your ear, Rodney.
Rodney, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you have an answer, if you don't know, just to say so, but it's, and this is in the county, so it's not your responsibility. But, and eventually, though, it may, may become something that affects what we do if we do annex these properties. The connection between the, the middle cul-de-sac, well, first of all, the road runs into a parking lot and stops.
And it's a city.
It's a road, yeah. It runs, and, and people have been made aware of that. There's no other outlet to, to anywhere, once you're off the Medical Campus Drive that runs around the hospital. The obvious one, it comes in from the subdivisions off of Robinwood there to the north, but that isn't planned right now or funded. Is, is the assumption, do you know, is the assumption that that will be developer-funded when that parcel was built? Because it's, it's hard to believe that it just goes into a parking lot, you know.
So just to be clear, you're talking about the piece from.
Right.
What is now called Varsity.
Right, Varsity.
Drive Boulevard into here.
Right. And my understanding is Varsity Extended is what's intended to hook up to that cul-de-
I don't, I don't know what developer would do that. I mean, it crosses the lands of Mount Etna Farms. I think the developer would be Mount Etna Farms.
Farms.
This connection here.
Interesting.
And the, correct me, but there used to be two roundabouts in the middle here, right?
That's correct.
And now there's one.
This is the current plan. They, they deleted one roundabout, changed the road network a little bit to, to decrease the cost.
And, and another technical thing, where since they changed it, Professional Court Extended would connect to which of these two roundabouts?
The second one, right in the middle of the page. Professional Court's here in the upper left.
Just north of the Stormwater Management?
It would go right past the Stormwater Management, that green, light green blob on there, and it would go past that and tie into that stubborn.
Right, so you would, yeah, and there, at one time, there had been two, and it connected closer.
Right. The road now kinda goes right through the middle of the property.
So if you were trying to reach the hospital, you would come across, go around that roundabout, go down here, the, probably half mile to the.
Next roundabout.
The next roundabout, two roundabouts up to the hospital.
Right.
Rodney, you wanna touch on curbs and construction design standards?
Yeah, with, we met with the county last week just to get an update on this, and the road that you see on this drawing is gonna be what we call, in engineering terms, an open-section road, which means it does not have curbing. It has a shoulder, and then they'll have swales to try to deal with some of the new stormwater management regulations. But then, on the one side, they will have an eight-foot-wide multi-use path for bicycles and pedestrians. So they will have some account for, for those alternate modes of transportation. The piece that goes from the cul-de-sac towards Professional Court, they're designing with a, with curbs, is what we call a closed-section road, was, with a multi-use path on one side.
From the cul-de-sac, you mean from the roundabout?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
From the roundabout?
Mm-hmm.
So that's closed section.
Right.
Which, and the drainage is in ditch, I mean, is enclosed in structures.
Right.
Open section got ditches running alongside.
Exactly.
Fundamental way to say it.
Right, right.
Is this, is this a?
Which is not city standard.
No.
Yep.
Curbing is our standard.
Is this close to what City of Hagerstown requires? I mean, if we annex this, are we going to be annexing something that is consistent with what our requirements are?
My first and foremost concern would be that the paving itself is built to the amount of traffic that's going to be on it. If we have that, that's, that's a first concern. The second concern, then, would be, I think, accounting for other forms of transportation and having adequate lanes, and I believe they are doing that. It doesn't look exactly like the way we would build a street.
Right.
But I think they're meeting those two criteria.
It's close enough.
So this is two lanes of a future four lane?
The piece that you see on here is actually three lanes. It's one through lane each direction with a center turn lane.
Is it an eventual four lane?
Uh, yes, that's what the traffic study said.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So it'd be built like Eastern Boulevard was, where you start out with two, or just three with the, the middle turn lane and then.
And then widen.
Then, and the middle turn lane turns into a median, and then you have the Ketrue Boulevard?
Yeah, I think that'll be the case to some degree, and I think some of it depends on where the driveways and access points will be.
How it comes to develop.
So it's still a work in progress.
Okay. Of these, of these projects, it looks like two of them are of no cost to us. Is that right, three and, and four? So that of the projects, three of them could be at some cost to us, but, they're the two or not.
Two, well, we will be involved. I can't answer that directly, but the others are either asking for funding, asking for studies, or just trying to move projects along.
Yeah, so you recommend a pretty thrifty package, so to speak.
Yes, thrifty package, yeah.
All right, well, thank you. Any comments or any other questions?
Anything we didn't get on there?
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Rodney. Okay. Next up are proposed amendments to the City Code, Chapter one seventy-six, regarding peddlers and transient dealers. Everyone should have received the proposed amendments earlier today, and the text. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to summarize, what, what was the compelling reason for the changes?
Well, our, our current peddler and transient dealer ordinance has been in place for about thirty years, and we have always sort of struggled with some of the language, the definitions and the restrictions in the, in the code. The city clerk and I talk on a fairly regular basis when someone comes in and is across the counter from her. It's not, our current legislation is not real functional, not easy to deal with. So what we've done is we've tried to give you four categories of a vendor, two types of peddlers, and a transient dealer, which are defined in the code. And the, basically, the peddler and transient dealer definitions are similar to what we've had. Vendor is for someone who's gonna, instead of going door-to-door, gonna be at a fixed location. And we actually haven't had a good definition for that category.
That would be the hot dog guy.
Exactly. Good, a good example. The fees have also been increased. I do not believe they have been increased for about thirty years. We've tried to address the necessary exemptions for things like interstate commerce exemptions, Maryland agricultural products, some things will need to be exempt. We have exempted from the fee, the requirement that a nonprofit pay any fee. We've exempted, and a lot of these things have come up at previous work sessions, we've exempted lemonade stands for up to fourteen days. What, the one thing that's in here that I think is very beneficial to the citizens is that the license itself will actually be issued as a photo ID card, which will have to be displayed when your vendor or your peddler is operating. And we do get a lot of calls in here to City Hall when someone's going door-to-door, knocking on the door. We're trying to figure out, hey, who's at my door? Are they supposed to be here? And we've just spelled out in a little bit more detail some of the appeal rights for someone who applies and might be denied or revoked at some point. And we've also converted the penalty for a violation of the ordinance from a criminal penalty to a municipal infraction with up to a five-hundred-dollar fine, that, that fine would then come back to the city for a violation that's proven in court.
How long ago did you say it was that when fees were last raised?
I think it was in nineteen, it was ninety-two? Okay. The ordinance was originally adopted in eighty-three, and I guess updated in ninety-two for the fees.
We also added time limitations for when someone can go door-to-door, depending on the stuff.
Right.
Apparently, there was no time limitations for when people could go.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Munson?
Those time limitations don't apply to political activity, do they?
Okay. That's a peddler of a different sort, Tom.
Yeah, I understand, but you never can tell.
Mr. Alshire?
The first definition of vendor, just so I have some clarity, it says, "person or entity in a fixed place of business on private or public property," or the streets, or the sidewalks, or the rights of way, or public lands of the city, "for the purpose of selling goods, et cetera." So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, when I read that, it doesn't say whether the person, and maybe it's somewhere else where it specifies that this is a person not operating any fixed structure.
Well, it does say, "not occupying a building or structure," in the second line there.
In the ordinance itself.
Hold on. Okay.
And, yeah, that's in the ordinance itself.
Okay. So would this address the, the sidewalk sales that you see, like the, the shirts and purses on Jonathan?
Right.
That are generally fixed, or the vendor that has permanently set stuff out on the sidewalk over on Antietam?
And also on Washington.
And Washington, yeah. The Antietam is, I think, a little bigger than the Washington.
It would apply.
What we have with the Washington's grown.
It would apply to somebody that sets up shop where they don't have a shop. I think, are you talking about yard sale in front of my?
I'm trying to figure out, because they generally have a yard sale operating out of a house, and then they move all the junk out on the sidewalk all day.
Right.
And then they move all the stuff back in at night.
It would apply, Maryland law provides for a certain number of yard sales that are permitted per year. That is an exemption in this code, and it's preempted, and rightly so. Once they're outside of the parameters of how many yard sales per year they can operate, then they would have to have a vendor license.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we're.
But they're operating out of fixed place of business, don't they?
The two are, they have, they have places of business.
I don't know if it's an actual business, I know it's a house.
Oh, I don't know about that. I'm talking about the ones that are already businesses.
Okay, but who uses or occupies?
The situation where we have an actual business, I don't think they're gonna qualify, they're, we're gonna put them under this ordinance. We may have other issues to deal with on there, whether it's an encroachment into the right-of-way or something.
Well, yeah, because the one most definitely is. And hanging on to the light poles is another biggie.
I have some questions. The person, are you done?
Yeah, I just wanna know that we're writing something that's going to address those couple of consistently visible cases.
If, if you're talking about a situation that it actually is a business, it's a store, and they're putting things out front, it's not going to apply. But I don't think this is, I don't think this is the vehicle to address that problem.
Like the one that was next to Chicks that had the tarps up, like, I mean, that's almost what I view this Antietam Street one as.
That was a house, was that?
Yeah, and that's how I view this Antietam Street one right now.
I think that's probably a situation where they're beyond the parameters of having permitted yard sales, and they would then be required to have a vendor license.
Do we have a, you raised, you know, we have examples of things that we wanna not have, and they're pretty obvious. Given the example of a vendor, I mean, we have the guy who's been selling hot dogs from a court for a long time. Has anyone ever heard a complaint about that? But this would essentially outlaw that.
No, no, this would require him to get a license.
No, it would be a license, Lou. Peddler, "No licensee may then peddle or deal within three hundred feet, which is a football field length, of a permanent store, restaurant, or other business which offers or sell goods or services which are similar or to or compete with those of the licensee," which essentially cuts out anybody from having a food court downtown, because they're gonna be within a hundred yards of a restaurant.
But I don't know if you can get hot dogs anywhere downtown.
Well, I mean, you know, Mayor, that may be a, a nice way to make fun of it, but.
No, I'm being serious.
You can get hot dogs down, you can get food downtown.
Right. We can, we can address the distance considerations, but those distance restrictions, I think, were in updates about, from about ten years ago.
No, I, I, listen, I understand, and I understand why those were put in there, and those are things for us to discuss. They were put in there because we were having problems. Bruce, you remind me if I'm wrong, but what we were having were some ice cream trucks pull up right in front of stores that sold ice cream. I think it was the ice cream trucks that were the problem.
We've had ice cream, and then we've also had food vendors pulling up within close proximity.
Right, 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 in front of a restaurant, charging.
Right.
Less expensive prices, and restaurants came to us and complained, and said, "This is unfair competition. We're paying real estate taxes, we're doing this, we're doing that, and these people are pulling right up in front of our store and undercutting our business." Now, we don't have that problem right now, though. I mean, and, and the other thing we need to, to think about when we put that in there that in there is, we got an ice cream truck goes around town, at least one ice cream truck that goes around town. You know, is he going to be violating the law if he stops within X amount of feet of a restaurant? And I just throw those out for us to think about, because I want to be careful that we get rid of what we don't want, but we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater and find that we pass a statute that does do away with things that are not a problem for us and who we're not getting complaints about. And I'm not sure, I'm not here to tell anybody exactly right now how we address that particular issue. You know, the major cities have issues with food trucks. You see it all the time, how they try.
They have lottery now in DC.
Right, and I mean, and we don't have the food trucks in Hagerstown yet, and they're a very nice thing for citizens. I mean, obviously, the people like them, but clearly, there is some degree of unfairness for those who pay real estate taxes to be in that competition. So, you know, I don't know if we can find some way to make everybody happy, or, but that was my only concern, is I read the statute, that distance, and how we handle that, and I'm not sure.
Well, I think when we addressed it 10 years ago, we addressed it from the protect our brick-and-mortar businesses.
Right, yeah.
And I think we probably went through an exercise to determine that 300 feet would still permit vendors at various locations, but maybe we need to address that again to see if 300 is the appropriate distance.
Well, the hot dog vendor in front of the post office, that would.
Or, you know, there's other ways to do it.
Be permissible is a restaurant, right? And I'm not saying it should be permissible necessarily, because I, it's not just property taxes. Somebody that's in an enclosed space has to pay utilities, all kinds of things, and the person there, we're paying the utilities. We're maintaining the street and the sidewalk, and they're just using it.
Well, and that restriction's in our current ordinance, so.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
One thing we may want to do is seek some input from the Downtown Alliance, because the other thought process that I have is when I look at this, this, that provision, you know, we weren't having problems with our downtown merchants. It wasn't a downtown issue. It was outside of the downtown area. My recollection was out in the West End, where you have a mom-and-pop store that is out there by itself, and suddenly, the food truck pulls up right in front of them, where they're the only place in town, whereas what you may find is you can exempt those distance requirements in our downtown core, potentially, but maintain them in our neighborhoods, so that neighborhood restaurants have this full protection. I think downtown is a relatively vibrant place that probably, with regards to restaurants, can survive competition. I may be wrong, but that's one thought process that I would have, because clearly, what we want to do is we do want to protect the outlined neighborhood mom-and-pop stores and restaurants. You don't want somebody pulling right up in front of their curb, and that's exactly what the problem was.
Yeah, but that's when the construction was going on also, up there, when they were doing Hope 6, because that's when he had come in, and it was because you had so many workers that were involved, and they would buy from the truck, because I know I had gone up there several times to speak to the owner of the store. And as a matter of fact, I've even spoke to him recently about traffic. What I want to know, Mark, is, is that now, such as the hot dog vendor, okay, will he now have to have a license?
Yes.
Yeah, I think he has a license.
He already does. He already does, okay, because see, back when this all started with him, there was never, you know, anything that was really looked at, and again, I wasn't here. So those selling snowballs, and I don't even know if that happens any longer.
We've exempted that.
Okay, they are exempt.
Up to 14 days.
But 14 days, okay, so if you have, like we had when my kids were going to school, okay, we did it all summer, and I don't know that they even have them any longer, but that's what I wanted to know.
I think 14 days came out of a work session the last time we addressed some of the problems.
Snow cone stands, because they are most often operated by children and families.
Yeah. But this temporary basis, like just seasonal? Yeah, as far as seasonal, but now you're saying 14 days.
Well, 14 days is too arbitrary. I assume we can, we can change that, but when you get into the situation where.
Well, I don't know, because see, well, again, you don't know what situation you're going to get into, so, you know. And how about the one that is down on Jonathan and Bethel, the one that hangs the clothing on the fence? So how's that considered?
I think that'd be a fixed vendor, that'd be a vendor, fixed location, and they'd need a license.
Okay, because I know that.
And he does have a license too.
He does? Okay.
But under this, he would not be able to stay there at the same location, is that right?
No, he would be a vendor, so he could be at a fixed location.
Fixed place.
As long as he had the permission to be there.
Okay.
Well, I do, Lou, I wasn't making fun of it. I think you raised an important point. No, I apologize if you thought that, but I do think it's important to get input from the Downtown Alliance to see what those stakeholders think about. I think that's a great idea. And so right now, I mean, I think we can all take another, you know, closer look at this. I think it's scheduled to be on for introduction at the end of the month. So what I would suggest is, if you have any questions or suggestions, to get with Donna and talk with her about what changes might be incorporated. We can always, if there's anything by the end of the week, we can put it on another work session next week.
And I want to thank staff. I think they've done a nice job, and I'm very grateful for the photo ID requirements.
I do want to ask one question for Mark.
Sure. Yes, thank, thank you, staff. And Mr. Munson?
Mark, when restaurants have sidewalk space, do they have to pay for that sidewalk space in any way?
Typically, I think we do that through a license agreement. The city will issue them a license to be in a certain.
So they have to pay some fee for the license?
I don't know that we charge.
I don't think so. I don't think we charge.
Okay. Well, Kristen raised a good issue a few minutes ago, and I'd like to raise it as well. And that's the continuing yard sales on the sidewalks. I mean, it happens right down on Washington Street, crossing the TV station beside, beside the restaurant there, El Paso. Further down the block, on the right-hand side, you have a pawn shop, and they have, they have stuff sitting on the sidewalk all day long, every day that they're open. I don't think that those, those activities are very appropriate, and if this can't handle it, we probably ought to look at, at doing something about that.
I think that would be more of an, more of a encroachment issue. We'd have to see where their property line ends, where the right-of-way for the city begins, but I think that's the way we'd need to address those issues.
It could even be enforced, given the current ordinances.
I think so.
Well, it's use of public right-of-way. We control use of the public right-of-way.
Yeah, because when you're painting, when El Paso was painting, if they were, if they were within so much, okay, then they were, okay, it's not getting a permit, but with these that are owners of, even if they're businesses, there's not that much room to walk.
Right, I think you're talking about the.
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be accurate, fair to say that, you know, the role of the council is to come up with either enforcement of our current ordinances or coming up with ordinances to resolve this issue? This has been an issue I think many of us have brought up for quite some time, and I think.
It is in multiple locations throughout, especially downtown.
Yeah, either we do enforce what's on the books, or if that isn't good enough to solve the problem, then we just have to bring back to us a solution to that.
Okay, Mr. Brubaker? And then we've got to move on.
Just a question, and a question that applies to citizens all. When some, and we've had so many door-to-door people in my neighborhood, it's getting to be annoying. Do you have the right to ask to see a license?
Well, this, they're going to have to, they're going to have to have a photo ID one.
The requirement under this would be that they have to have it.
They have to have it displayed.
Yep.
So I can tell my neighbors who are also annoyed.
But not yet, right? It's not required.
Correct, it's not.
It's not required now.
The new ordinance will require it.
But they'll have to display a license. It's not, and I'm not, we're not talking about the Girl Scout cookie sales.
No.
Nonprofit. We're talking about sales for profit.
Well, actually, we're going to, we're going to give them a license too, but they won't have to pay.
They have to pay for it, yeah.
And then the magazine sales?
Magazine sales is a big, a big issue that we deal with, but it's a future, delivery of a future good, and it falls under a Commerce Clause issue, so we, we struggle with that when we're trying to.
Delivery of a future good?
Uh-huh.
Delivery of, taking orders for delivery of future goods. We can't require them.
Well, how's that differ from like somebody selling freezer stuff?
Is that like the Schwanz guy?
Almost anything door-to-door.
Yeah, the Schwanz guy.
But it's for a future delivery.
Those are, we have, that's a.
Why is that not a vendor?
We've, we've exempted, like, a truck that goes door-to-door on a regular route and is expected by the homeowner. We've exempted that for regular delivery.
Yeah, but somebody selling that service, not a regular delivery. Somebody's selling the, the truck, or coming in either impromptu, off the street.
I mean, selling magazines.
Or magazines, but when they're selling the freezer service, it might be, we happen to have it quote-unquote out in the truck, or it might be.
You're talking about a service now, rather than a good?
No, I'm talking about meat or frozen food.
It's the guy that comes around and he's got meat in his truck. It's not the Schwanz man.
Always has it left over.
It's always left over, right. It's a real good deal.
If he has the goods with him.
Yes.
He has, he falls under the vendor statute.
I think you're down by capital.
Yeah, I guess. I don't know. All I know is I get knock-knock on the door.
But you're.
Well, I'm still not clear. What if somebody's selling alarm services?
Not home to get the call.
Services falls, any service falls under the statute.
Alarm service salespeople have different regulations to follow. It's all through the county and the state. They have to have a special permitted license to do that.
But you tell me if someone comes and sells magazines for the school education, they don't have to have any license at all?
It's a tricky one. It's a, it's a, it's a Commerce Clause and a First Amendment issue.
Well, kids can buy to sell candy, and they're kids. They're not the college kids.
That's usually non-for-profit, yeah.
Oh, whatever.
Well, you know, let's do some more homework, and we'll come back to the table at least in two weeks.
What, the Girl Scout selling goods for future?
We've chewed on that one enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've chewed on it.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, so we won't put it on for introduction in two weeks. We'll, we'll put it on for another work session in October. I do thank you all for working on this. I know it's been quite a task. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, so now we're at the long-term budget strategy. I know that this is a hot topic as we look at especially the current impending budget deficit. I know that we're desiring to honor our employees by giving them enhanced compensation, so I know, I think Mr. Alshire has been the most vocal about the long-term budget strategy, but I just wanted to open it up as a discussion, talk about what that strategy will be. Mr. Alshire, would you like to start? Ms. Hepburn, would you like to start?
I'm actually here tonight just to kind of get some guidance and feedback, some direction on some of the, the big things that we've mentioned in the past.
Let's start off, the current projected deficit for next year is what?
$3.8 million.
$3.8 million.
In the general fund.
In the general fund.
That 3.8 million, based on decisions that we have made to date in this budget year, has that figure changed?
Not, not really.
Not substantially.
When you're 3.8 million in the hole, any amount substantially.
Are you talking about FY15 or FY14? FY15.
FY15.
FY15, not the current year. Well, I want to make it clear to people that we're not 3.8 million in the hole.
Right.
For the budget year. We're in balance this budget year. I just want to be clear, the projection right now, based on an assumption of the assessable base decreasing.
Eight percent.
Is, is eight percent, which we have no idea what that will be.
And increase of the money we're spending. And it's not, this deficit isn't based simply on an eight percent reduction.
That's correct.
And it's based on an escalation of the amount of money we're going to spend next year over what we're spending this year.
It's based on the projections that are in your packet, and those assumptions behind those projections are laid out in the attachment to the memo.
Right, which include additional expenses above and beyond what we're spending this year.
Employee compensation being the largest.
Being the largest.
Employee compensation being the largest.
And some capital projects.
Right, but that's debt service.
Yes, it is.
But there is a big assumed increase in debt service.
Yes.
But compensation and that debt service.
But, but that big increase, I'm assuming, involves the three major, the, the major capital projects, starting with the minor league baseball, and the third parking deck?
And 15, correct. Stadium was, was included, third parking deck was included.
And the parking fund.
And the parking fund, that is, that is true.
Except for the general fund.
And, but unless those expenditures are made in FY14, there won't be any debt service in FY15, because debt service is the year after capital. It's still a very big concern about how we pay for it, regards to which year it starts. But, but that 3.8, the portion of it that's debt service assumes issuance in FY14, this current year. And it also assumes the eight percent in the assessable base, which we don't, we won't know that until ballpark of that, December or January.
And right, right now, just as a reminder, Superior Council adopted an ordinance and introduced, or, and a resolution for a bond issue in 2013. This year, it's 4.2 million.
Approximately.
Which, which includes Mel, the fire truck, some utility projects. It didn't include money for the stadium, the third parking deck.
It did not.
Or any of the other major capital projects. So, so that's what we're working on right now in terms of a bond issue for the current year, around 4.2 million.
Yes.
Right. But the budget assumed significantly more than that, as I recall.
For 15.
For, for next year.
For, well, for, to spend in 14 with the debt service in 15, I think so.
That we would get, that we would have one 2013 bond issue, but then we would have a second one in 2014 to help cover a portion of those projects.
Well, yeah, and this is 2014 we're in right now. So, so we may skate by that one, because it doesn't seem those projects are likely to be, occur this year. I say skate by, because they are concerns about how we handle them in future years.
But I think that, and this is just me, but I think the most effective approach is to decide those expenses that there is a majority in favor of proceeding with, and those revenue streams that there is a majority in favor of considering. In other words, to me, I just think you, you have these two lists, and you go down these two lists, and you say, are there three folks in favor of a fire tax? And if there isn't, you take fire tax off this, this table. Are there three folks in favor of enhancing revenue from the parking system from user fees? Me, I'm in favor of that. And, and you say, okay, are there three folks in favor of that? And that one goes on the list. In other words, I think you need to sort of put on the table first what you are and aren't going to do, and then from there, from what you are going to do, you'll know a bit more out of the gate of where you're going to be cutting, and where you're going to be increasing revenue.
Which is why I'm here. Yes.
And, and so I think that, for me, is the first conversation that we need to have. I mean, I'm sitting here, and I'm reading a memo, and I, and I know that the memo says, the first thing we should consider is, you know, employee wages and benefits, you know, and, you know, as, as funding, you know, first elements in your budget strategy. But, but for me, that, that, that isn't the first thing. It's certainly part of the budget, but unless I know which pieces I'm, you know, that there's a majority to support on those two sides of the, you know, the budget equation, I don't know how we can have that type of conversation. Well, it seems to me that since the recession took hold, the city has cut and cut and cut in terms of the expenditures as the revenues have decreased, and I think we have reached the critical point where, because of past budgets and the situation in previous years, we're to the point where we can't just keep cutting to solve the problem. And I think you have a good point. We need to consider all sources of revenue. We had the stormwater management fee on the table here a couple of weeks ago. There wasn't any support for that, so that one's off the table. I mean, we could go down the list. I mean, we can do a little straw.
I don't see real estate taxes on there.
Real estate taxes.
I wrote that, number 10, property taxes, great big letters, because frankly, that's what the city manager has recommended, and that's.
What I've been recommending for years.
Quick and dirty way of solving it.
So Marty, you're for that?
No, I'm not for that. You know, but let me. Well, I just wrote down that it's an option.
Let me make a suggestion, please. Please, Mr. Munson?
Kristen's right. We've got to know what's coming in and what's going out. And the best way to figure that out is, if, I think, if every other, if every other work. session we have, part of it's devoted to aspects of the budget where this stuff is relevant. We really ought to put some intense work into it, I think.
Well, it's fairly simple, if it's a general fund item, what, a penny in the tax rate is what now, about 250,000?
250 currently.
250 is what I use as a rule of thumb. So if you're proposing 250, that's not in the budget or in these projections, then that, you know, that's a penny on the tax rate.
That's, I understand that, but it doesn't pay for, it doesn't pay our personnel issues.
Well, that does pay for personnel. Personnel issues make us into a deficit, it's that much on the tax rate, or we have to cut expenditures somewhere.
And I don't, I don't think it's that simple, and I'm definitely not.
I don't, I'm not recommending a penny on the tax rate. I'm just saying.
But I think going straight to this conversation of, you know what, we're facing a 4 million deficit, if we cut it, you know, some of these projects you're looking at, maybe 3 million, 3 million is still 12 cents increase on the tax rate. If other folks are there and don't want to talk about the other things, you know what I mean, to offset that 12 cents, that's fine, but, but I'm not there.
I'm not saying it's, it's simple in that that's what you ought to do and add to the tax rate. I've been one of the biggest defenders of not doing the tax rate. I'm just saying, when you're proposing to increase a service, that's the implication, unless there's, you have a compensating cut somewhere. That's the implication.
Or an alternative revenue source.
Or an alternative revenue source that's general fund. And if you cut a bond project, that's not, that's not, that much money doesn't come off the budget, it's the debt service on that bond-funded project that comes out of the budget.
What, Mr. Alshar, what do you see as the options? You mentioned the fire tax, parking fees, obviously there's property tax revenues, what other sources of revenue?
Just to be clear, I mentioned the fire tax because it's number two on here.
There's a list on page two.
Right. For, for me, I think that we need, I, I mean, if I was going down the list, I would say I would support some directed, and I think we had that conversation when Rodney was here, I would support some directed purpose for number one. Obviously, I support number three. Four for the utility dividend, I support the parking system user fee adjustment, the adjustment in the rate differential, the utility tax rate, and, you know, I think the vendor ordinance tonight was a prime example of, you know, a review of our service charges for services. So, you know, number eight's on that list. And again, I think that's sort of half the equation. And my goal was to look at the revenue and expense.
These don't affect the general revenue.
Parts of the budget and say, okay, I'm under no illusion that a tax increase isn't an integral part of the conversation at this point. But for me, if I can, if I can determine that, you know, half of it, six cents out of the 12 is doable by adjustments within the budget, you know, then I think that that's, for me, that that's the direction that I would proceed and the effort that I would make to achieve that, you know, before we get into March of next year. You know, the stadium discussion's only, only a week old really at this point in terms of any degree of, you know, I guess, finality, but, you know, that bond issuance for a stadium isn't a single-sided equation where you're saving on the bond issuance of not having to pay that 400,000 a year for 20 or 30 years, but you're also talking about not expending $170,000 a year, and it's really 120 after you take out the amusement tax, that you're not going to get, but that extra 120,000 a year, so it's not, you know, it's not that simple figure. I mean, so right there, you know, is a significant sum of, you know, of your annual expense. And I understand what you're saying, that it's a capital expense and, you know, and it's debt finance, but, you know.
Right, and that's certainly a possibility, but you're going to the null hypothesis of not doing any stadium project at all. So, you know, I just want to be clear, when you throw out those numbers, that's not doing.
Without a team, I certainly.
And I'm not saying that that's, we could wind up there because we could decide it's not, although that, that money leverages a whole lot of other money.
But I think that's why I said, you've got to sit down and say, okay, what, what on the spending side are we going to sit down and say that there's three votes for? I personally, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I support a third parking deck downtown. I do support that. I know it has an impact on where we're going to get the revenue to do it.
But you have to pay for it.
I agree with that. But what I'm saying is, I'm one vote of five that says yes. That item for me is a yes. And I think you go through that list, both on the spending side and the revenue enhancement side, and say which ones are yeses and nos. And if there's three for a third deck, then you plug that into your budget between now and March, and if there's not, then you take it off the list and you know.
But we have to have an analysis of what, what the costs and.
I think if you're going to get into that, I think to do that for every single item, I think is time prohibitive.
Well, I think you might be able to get there if you have to. I mean, I think you can take a look.
I'll do it then.
No, I mean, it's like, you know, in my business in criminal defense, you've got drug tests, some of them are screening tests. So there's some things that people may say, you know, I'm absolutely opposed to this, I don't care what. There may be things, a parking deck may be example, where you could say, you know, this is one of those things where I can keep it on the list, but I'm going to need more information on this. Whereas there, you know, I look at number three on here on the revenue side. To me, you know, I have my own opinion of number three. I know you said yes, I would say no to number three. So, but there may be somebody who says, well, I'm on the fence on number three, I want some more information.
You can't just look at it as a topic in here and make a decision about it. You have to know what the yields are and all that sort of thing.
Well, I can look at number three and know that I have enough information about that to know that I wouldn't be in favor of it. And that's, that's what I'm saying, there's certain things on here that we as either elected officials or just people can look at and for right or for wrong, say I would support that or I wouldn't. And then there are things on here that you go, hmm, I really would like to discuss that some more. There's certain things that have been discussed an awful lot, either in here or elsewhere, that's all.
And I'm going to make it clear that, I was being overly simple because I hear, I support melt, I support increased employee compensation, I support the service improvement.
And you've got to pay for it.
But you've got to pay for it.
Absolutely.
And that part, who supports that? I don't know.
Well, I.
Who supports that and how's it supported?
My me.
And that's why I said, the simple thing is unless you have one of these other alternatives, and by the way, expenditure reductions aren't on here either, that's number 11, but unless you support one of these alternatives and know what the yield is for that, then it's easy to say but hard to come out with the answer.
I understand that.
And that's why I was simplifying it. Otherwise, every 250,000 is a penny in the tax rate unless you have another solution.
And I just want to make it clearer for one.
And it may be 230,000 after January. It might be every penny yields 230,000.
And I have, and I will say it for the record again, I think that those who serve with me know it for right or for wrong, or for good or for bad, this will be at least the fourth year in a row that I have said we have to increase real estate taxes. So, I think one thing.
I see Penny, Ms. Knoll, you're nodding your head, so you would support that as well?
What, real estate?
Increased property taxes.
Yeah, and I think that the people need to understand how much it is on 100 dollars. And everybody goes to the extreme like, oh my, you know, now we're going to get hit again. They have to realize exactly how much it is on 100 dollars.
And, and we have to, I totally agree with what Kristin's saying though, and I totally agree with what Martin's saying. There are things we have to look at, and we've got to decide what we're going to spend and how we're going to fund it. And then we have to do, one of our responsibilities is what Penny just said, we have to let the people know what that's going to cost them in real dollars, for one. And two, what that money's for. And I think it's pretty safe to say right now by way of example, it's not going to be for a stadium next year. I mean, I think that's pretty clear.
That's pretty safe.
Right, and we have a lot of discussions about the stadium to have with the public now about, about how that works. We've seen how it works in Fredericksburg. It's known as private money. I mean, that's pretty obvious. And as I just heard, I think Savannah's having the same issue. I think they're about to lose their team.
So, I mean. Ironic that both of those teams are playing in the championship.
Right, but I think that's what we need to do, and we need to get back to that chart, which shows the combined city-county tax rate that our citizens have paid over the last 15 to 20 years, and that combined tax rate to again establish that even at the type of rates we're talking about, we're only talking about getting up to where we used to be. We're not talking about having tax rates, combined city tax rates, that are going to be in excess of what people were paying in this community four years ago. And I think it was a very big mistake we made then. I predicted then, and I say it again, that past administrations, past councils have put us in the position that we are facing now. There have been past administrations for the last probably three administrations, administrations that everybody except Don has been involved with, who made a decision long ago in our utilities, that we were not going to let this happen with our utilities, that we weren't going to hit people with some huge utility rate one year. We were going to give them incremental utility rates every single year so nobody found out that there was going to be some horrible utility rate increase. I have some big fears now that we're going to have what may be the largest quote tax increase that we've seen in a long time, because I don't know that we've ever won more than a penny.
Now, we've gone 4 cents.
4 cents, well, I, I think we'll be lucky if we can keep it at that, at that rate at this stage of the game. But having said that, it's important to acknowledge what it's for. And it's, and clearly what it's for is employee compensation, and you're going to have those folks out there who say, you know, city employees are overpaid, we know what, we know what we're going to hear. We're going to hear on one end of people who don't get that type of compensation, how they're overpaid, and on the other end, we're going to hear how we don't compensate our city employees properly. And we've got to make that decision, but I think we need to understand that that's really what we're talking about. It's not about stadiums and capital projects, it's about employee compensation and how we fund it. Not only how much we pay them, but what kind of amount of employees do we have? We sit here, I'd say if there's one thing this administration has heard from the get-go, there's complaints about lack of city services, whether it's police, whether it's trash. And we didn't have those complaints in the past. We really didn't. We had higher tax rates in the past, we had higher revenue sources in the past, we had more employees in the past. Our employees, we have asked to do much more for less. And they have. They have. There used to be a day, you know, the old days where, what do you mean, you're asking me to do this? That's, that's not my union contract, that's not what I do, that person does it. That stuff ended long ago. And our employees, when this recession hit, have stepped up to the plate, whether, whether it's snow removal, that people don't understand that everybody, every person who works in the city came up to the plate for, or other things like that. And there comes a time when you can only continue to ask people on a one-way street for so long before you lose the good faith that they've given. And we've got to discuss it, and we've got to discuss how we pay for it.
What percentage of the general fund is spent on employees? Do you know that off the top of your head?
It's approximately, what, 65 to 70% of our expenditures.
I just wanted that to be clear, that it is our people, our people. The 437 or 8 employees total that the city.
That's the approximate range, wouldn't you say, Michelle?
I think, I actually have a schedule, but I don't think that.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's about right.
A general idea.
I can simply share that.
And what is that? That's our police, our fire, our parks, our roads, and our electrical. I mean, it's what makes this city run. And you just.
Or the amount of customer service representatives downstairs, which affects how long you wait on the telephone, or how long you wait in line.
Exactly.
Another way to put it too, the largest category is public safety.
Right, I think about 80% of that is public safety.
Police require, the biggest category is public safety, and I'm not criticizing.
Those are the biggest departments.
A comment of where the money goes.
And of course, just to get on the soapbox to take up for Councilmember Brewbaker, if we had an appropriate county tax set off, we wouldn't be in this situation. But we don't and we are, so that's all we can do is moan about it and try to get, try to repair, keep fighting it, but that's.
Lou, I don't see where you and Kristin are in such disagreement.
Oh, I don't think we're in disagreement at all.
I just, and we, we do need to study these.
Right.
You guys know a lot more about them than I do, since I'm the newest guy on the council, but I think we need to take a look at them in some depth and clearly understand the ramifications of all this stuff.
I agree with you.
And, but I don't think we should wait till the last minute.
I agree with you.
Because of the situation being the way it is, we don't have the luxury of waiting to get to the last minute.
I agree with what you said, I think it needs, I think it needs to get on our agenda on either a regular basis or, or to do a workshop. Early on, it's the fall, it's the time to do it. We could, we could do a budget workshop and start hammering this thing out.
I mean, I think we could bring them up by category, that's what I was talking about, having to know more detail.
I'm all for it.
I can't, I want to know how we're going to implement one of these things, and some of them I do have gut reactions like you do, but I still think we should discuss.
Well, I think we all feel that way, right?
I just want to be sitting here in March and going, wow.
Well, we should have a budget march.
Well, but I think our staff is hearing us say that we want to get started on this now.
I do?
Yeah, we all do.
Isn't that what we just said? We'd like to know.
About two weeks before your regular meeting, we meet at 4 o'clock.
Or maybe, maybe 5.
Maybe 5. You can at least spend two hours on a budget workshop on the 24th.
I'm for it.
And then let's plan on doing it twice a month.
That works for me.
Works for me. And if we feel we need more, we'll do more.
So what would be your first category or topic that you want to focus on, on the 24th? Because obviously you can't focus on everything in the memo all at once, you're going to have to break it down like you're saying.
The revenue side.
Where do you want to begin?
Either that or capital projects.
I would agree, either capital projects or revenue side. Doesn't make any difference to me.
Or what, Lou?
Capital projects or the revenue side.
The revenue side's a whole big thing though, I mean, these are all components. Take the first three of the revenue side.
Yeah, I'm not talking about all of them.
Right.
And you're going to have other options on revenues, our capital projects beyond all, it's on the list, this was meant to just start the discussion, so.
Right, to start, why don't we just take the first three of the revenues?
Right, why don't we just go through it in order instead of arguing about it? If we're going to do it systematically, why not do that?
I'm fine with anything.
So start with capital improvement projects? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, well, we can start, I don't disagree with that, if we can see what, moving them around would yield.
Revenues is fine for us if you want to start.
That's fine, but then, then I think Don meant the first three on the list of.
Revenues.
Revenue, yeah.
Sold.
But I'm willing to start with capital projects and the changes or where they're going, implications are.
Yeah, revenues and then capital projects. Because unfortunately, a lot of the, a lot of the expense side, we're going to be discussing in the executive.
Well, I want to raise one thing though, yeah, major capital improvement projects, we're talking, we're going to talk about the detail of these major capital improvement projects, is that right here on the first page?
Why, we're talking about detail, including expenses, real expenses to the budget.
Associated with the stadium, associated with the third downtown parking deck, and expenses associated with melt, I think that'd be great.
Absolutely.
I think that would be very enlightening. So, by capital projects, those are the first three, there might be other adjustments, but.
Let me just make sure, okay, your first, first.
And I, yeah.
First three in the capital projects or which ones?
Well, any of the, all the capital, major capital improvement projects, I think that's what Kristin meant, right?
Yeah, I mean, those are the three biggest ones.
Those are the three biggest ones, but, I mean, I don't want to give you too much to bite off, because there's a lot of information about those first three.
But for the 24th, we're focusing on the revenues right now, right? The first three revenues?
No.
Yes.
Is that what that is? Is that what that is?
That's what everybody's saying.
First three revenues.
Yeah.
I heard capital improvement projects from Kristen and Don.
Where we're, everybody, we're all talking.
We changed to revenues? Okay.
So, the final order that I heard was revenue, expenditures, and then capital projects.
I think that's great.
And then we're doing the first three.
Yeah.
First three in the revenues.
Yes.
Right, right.
And then, I would just encourage you, you know, over your 10 months in office, for example, number four, downtown revitalization projects. There's been a lot of different ideas tossed around. Right now, we don't know what that means.
Right.
And now it's saying we need to know here this afternoon.
Well, that's almost another...
But, you know, there may be neighborhood projects. We put neighborhood park projects, because we've heard that, but you may have other neighborhood projects. So, when you get into the CIP projects, we're going to need some help from the council in terms of what does that involve, what do you really want on the list?
So, but we'll have completed revenues, then we'll go to capital projects with that knowledge.
Right.
Is that where we are? I think it's a good way to do it.
Well, let's get to revenues first.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Okay, so, 5:00, 5:00 on the 24th, and we'll focus on those first three revenues.
Sure.
Good, good.
If we're really planning on being there at 6:30, it's going to be hard to get on to the next...
Right, well, hopefully, the last item on the agenda will be short, but I know that at least a couple members, or a few, for the last few meetings, have been attending these meetings, the lobbying coalition meetings, so I was wondering if those folks who've been attending could just update everybody for the sake of information.
Good, Christian.
We had three meetings, July 10th, August 28th, I'm sorry, we had two. July 10th, August 28th, we have one coming up, September 18th.
That's three?
Um...
Three?
It was, yeah. But I don't...
I was in the middle one.
Yeah, I don't have one written down. I've attended all three. So, basically, what has occurred is a lobbying coalition has vetted, you know, this broad number of projects that all of the partners sort of bring to the table. And from my recollection, from our last meeting, seven or eight of these have sort of risen to the top, if you will. I think that's generally how it works. In the past, I think they generally try and, you know, have had like this structure of four, in different categories this time. There isn't, you know, sort of a ceiling. But ones that we talked about tonight are actually ones that are on the list, like Professional Court Bridge is on the transportation side, as well as widening of I-81. So, those are sort of two, I think, that have risen to the top on the transportation side. On the economic development, the Maryland Theater, broadband downtown, and a parking deck are the three under economic development that have sort of risen to the top. Stadium, obviously, was on that list for, you know, for obvious reasons. And then there is one that has been floating as it relates to the urban core, and that is, you know, reinvestment or redevelopment of downtown as it relates to the residential side. There's been a real structure put to that, so that was sort of pushed down. And then, the other one I think that relates to the city that has risen to the top through those discussions is MELP, you know, for obvious reasons that it, you know, of moving forward. So, of the ones I think that relate to the city, you know, the Professional Court Bridge, the Parking Deck Broadband, and MELP seem to be the four that have sort of been at the top of that list. Now, Maryland Theater is up there, but I think that it's been generally secured that there will be a bond bill asked for, and there will be, you know, some desire for show of support from the city, you know, as part of that process. But what they try and do, and you guys are probably familiar with the process, obviously, where they create a sort of a fact sheet, because you get, you know, a very short window in front of the legislators that you need to get in front of to make your sort of sales pitch to for those items. But right now, what they want is sort of some input from the city on those items, so that they can sort of start formulating those sheets, and then take those sheets down to our lobbyist, so he can kind of say, you know, "This is going to float," or, "You know what, this will probably go nowhere," and then come back and hone those sheets in, so to speak, on, you know, on a more direct note, to then take back that final list. I would say for this evening, because I don't see any head shaking against the four that I've sort of listed...
No, I'm all, I think they're great.
But the big unknown that they had, and I think that they wanted some feedback on, actually, there were two. One was the stadium, and like I said, I think that that is generally, you know, starting to answer itself. But then the other one was the broadband, and obviously, you know, we've got some road to go on that, in large part, I think, because a lot of folks just don't understand the complexities of it, you know, including me and the bodies. So, that's where the group is. Again, September 18th, they were sort of looking for a nod from the various parties or bodies of the various parties, for each project that's sort of, they're, you know, they're the leader on whether it's a board of ed project, you know, where's the board of ed sit on an issue, or a city sort of related project, and where the city sits on it.
I think it's a good list, Mayor.
And that's where...
Can you read the list again, Kristen? I'm sorry, the ones that relate to the city?
The four.
Professional Court Bridge, the broadband, the Parking Deck, and MELP seem to be the four, I think, that...
With a great deal of interest in Maryland Theater.
Right.
But that's...
Yeah.
And I would say, if there was some, if by some hook or crook in the stadium materialized, obviously, that would become a priority, but that would get inserted.
Yeah.
That would have to get inserted this year.
It's not right at this point.
You know what I mean, it would have to get inserted in the process.
All right, thank you for that update. We will move on to city administrators' comments.
None from me this evening.
All right, moving on to council comments. I'll start with Ms. Nye.
No, I've got to wait until Holtzman's here.
Okay.
Public safety, public safety, big-time public safety. We've got problems, Major. Okay.
Thank you, Mr....
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Brubaker?
Nothing tonight, I think people want to move on tonight.
I agree. Mr. Alshar?
Just two quick things. The first is, and it relates to Chief Holtzman, but, and the city term, one of the items that we've talked about is, you know, you hear this issue of, you know, "You need to clean up downtown, you need to clean up downtown." That's a pretty repetitive message. And one of those was a question that somebody posed that I had some curiosity to, and that is indoor smoking. Smoking isn't allowed inside of establishments in the state, you know, how to, to the hookah lounges that we have, sort of get around that.
Because it's their primary stock in trade, I think.
And so, the chief had some insight on that for me, and I think that that would be a good conversation at some point. The other thing is, there was a point in time when we talked about and instituted rental registration, and I think that that process generally, for better or worse, was for the better. But I know that there was a time when we talked about an additional step to that process, and one in which I think speaks to, you know, the residential side of things, and that was, at one point, we talked about a uniform residential lease ordinance. And if there is interest, I'd like to have a conversation about that again. So, those are the two items. The last item is more of a personal note, and I'll just share it here, because you're going to hear about it anyway, is, you know, my wife is expecting, and so we went to the doctor yesterday, and things are great.
Number five, right?
And we were fortunate enough to have more than we expected coming out of there, so there will be two instead of one.
Six instead of four.
And so, my mind is a bit of mashed potato right now, and that's why I seem a little off yesterday and today.
So, you're going to look for another job, right? In addition to the two you already have?
Yes, and it's going to need to buy a high-rise.
And a bigger car.
So, if I seem scattered over the next six months, it will be because I'm catering to a demanding woman.
How old's your oldest, Kristen?
6'4" and 2.
6'4", oh my goodness. Oh.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Mr. Munson?
Follow that up.
Yeah, I can, I'm trying to.
Don, now, if you say you're expecting, you're in trouble.
Just don't get into that. I would just like to say that I think what Lou was hinting at a couple of minutes ago was that we're probably not going to have a downtown stadium. That being the case, we, I think we need to really seriously look at a vision for downtown so that we can define ourselves. I went to a, I went to something over the weekend, and a person there walked up to me and said, "What is your vision for downtown Hagerstown?" I couldn't honestly answer that question. Now, when I look at the city, the cards that city workers have, and I flip them over, I notice that there's a vision statement on those cards. And I think we really need to start thinking about the vision for downtown Hagerstown. Now, I know all of us are interested in education, and we're interested in economic development and others, but I think we need to be able to have some kind of a statement and say, "This is the vision for downtown Hagerstown." And we talk to the media, we need to be able to say, "This is our vision." So, that's one thing. And the final thing is that last week at the meeting, I gave one of our staff people, Kathy Mayer, a bad time about the noise ordinance. And I owe her a public apology for doing so. It turned out that she had written a memo, which I misinterpreted being part of the noise ordinance. And the memo, when I really start talking to people in the city, had nothing to do with the noise ordinance or vice versa. And I thought that it did, but it doesn't, and Kathy's a very outstanding city employee who works her heart out, and I publicly apologize for any, for my way of handling that situation last week.
Thank you. Just a few quick things for me. Today, got to celebrate Citizen Emergency Preparedness Month, which I proclaimed September 2013 to be such here in Hagerstown. Also, and that is where we'll all be going, hopefully, all of us, I know some of us have